Okay. This class is going to walk you through this issue which you've, well, some of you have seen in one form or another in the past, but it's a request for Councilman Moore and Ferguson to revisit the possibility of various levels of smoking regulations. So, would you be able to do this? Do you remember?
Smoking, smoking is addressed in two places, or the city addresses it two places. One is the ordinance, um, in Chapter Five as an amendment to the International Fire Code. The second place is in City Policy. So, I'm going to address the ordinance first and then go to the policy. I wanted to review a few of the relevant definitions in the ordinance. The first one is food product establishments, basically via restaurants. The second are retail and service establishments, and these are your department, grocery stores, drug stores, any place that sells, um, goods and services to the general public. An administrative area is basically any place in an establishment that is not open to the public, so we're talking about individual offices, stock rooms, employee lounges, meeting rooms.
That you can.
That the public cannot. The public does not have access to. The ordinance prohibits smoking in several places, public libraries and museums, elevators used by the public, theater auditoriums, and places like that that do stage dramas, recitals, athletic events, except for the lobby and areas not open to the public, so you can smoke in those areas. Retail service establishments and city-owned hearing conference and meeting rooms and any other place where, basically, the general public is invited to participate in the city business. The ordinance next addresses food product establishments separately. And again, these are restaurants, basically restaurants. The ordinance allows smoking as long as there are separate indoor or enclosed dining areas for smokers and non-smokers, and it specifically says that some areas of the restaurant or the food product establishment cannot allow smoking. And those areas are, um, non-dining areas which the public has general access, but that doesn't include the restaurants.
They can smoke in the restaurant?
They can smoke in the restaurant. Or the ordinance doesn't prohibit smoking in the restaurants. The individual food product establishment owner can prohibit smoking in the restaurants. Next, the ordinance, um, addresses workplace, schools, and healthcare facilities. It basically says that the owner can designate the building or any portion of it not smoking as long as it has a written policy that it communicates to its employees at least three weeks before adoption, that it prominently displays no smoking signs, and that it provides for the extinguishment of smoking materials. The ordinance also exempts certain areas. The first one are basically tobacco shops, any retail service establishment which derives more than 50% of annual gross sales from the sale of tobacco. Administrative areas in the workplace, bowling centers, and bars, and that includes bars within a restaurant as long as the bar has more than 50% of annual gross sales from the sale of alcoholic beverages. Any public place consisting of less than 500 square feet, any food product establishment consisting of less than 500 square feet, a food product establishment if the indoor seating seats less than 50 people, and hotel motel meeting and assembly rooms, and rooms while in use for private social functions. So, that was the ordinance.
Well, in the restaurant, food preparedness had to come back, she was off to the side.
Okay, now, if we move on. To the smoking policy. And the smoking policy prohibits smoking in city-owned operated managed facilities, in city-owned vehicles and enclosed equipment, in the courtyard of this building, and in designated areas of outdoor recreation facilities, including the tennis complex, municipal pools, restrooms, concession rooms, and 10 feet from the dugout or team benches, playing fields or bleachers at Lake Park at Vista Ridge Park, and the restroom concession rooms in the concourse area of the amphitheater during city-sponsored events. In your packet, you have, um, a copy of the survey that was done with our survey cities and their ordinances, and I have a general summary that I'll go through with you, but there's one disclaimer. Some of these policies are about as clear as mud, and some of them say one thing, but the city actually implements them in a different way. There was one situation where, when I, I had some communication with city employees from that city, their ordinance said that smoking was prohibited in certain places, but in actuality, they allowed smoking as long as some, um, provisions were taken into place, as long as there was a ventilation system, et cetera. So, this was the best I could do, given that there's not a lot of clarity in how the ordinances are implemented. So, we have 16 survey cities, as y'all know. All of them, except Grapevine, specifically, have a smoking ordinance. Nine of them prohibit all smoking within retail service establishments, and we're included in that list. Eight of the cities prohibit all smoking in restaurants. Four of them specifically prohibit all smoking in bars. Now, some of them, bars fit into the definition where smoking is not allowed, but they didn't specifically cull bars out, so, no disclaimer. Three cities specifically address smoking in outdoor patios.
You're saying there are bars, there are bars that don't allow smoking? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and those four cities, you can go to any bar and you are not allowed to smoke. Ten cities specifically prohibit smoking within a designated distance from a door or upper bowling hole. Seven cities specifically prohibit smoking in a billiard facility. Six prohibit smoking in a bowling facility. Five prohibit smoking in a bingo facility.
Where? Back at the bowling facility.
Yes.
Now, the cities that don't, is that because they don't have a bowling alley?
Well, I'm sure Dallas has a bowling.
I'm not saying about Dallas.
I did not look into whether they actually had.
I'm trying to find the power.
Under our ordinance, would a bowling facility be considered a retail service establishment or something different? Is it carved out?
Bowling facilities are specifically exempted in power.
Okay. The original ordinance, uh, back in eighty-seven, uh, was one of the first things I had a pleasure attacking. In eighty-seven, the ordinance did prohibit smoking in bowling alleys and other facilities, so due to pushback and due to a large crowd at the next council meeting, then they exempted out the bowling alleys.
There you go.
High incidence of bowling and smoking?
According to the number of team shirts that were there that night.
Bowling may cause smoking. We don't know.
Twelve of the cities specifically have ordinances that address smoking in parks or athletic complexes, and two of the cities regulate smoking in parks by policy like we do.
Explain that.
Well, if it's a violation of an ordinance, you can issue a citation, or if it's a violation of policy, you cannot. You can just ask them to leave or put it out. So, we're down to our options. Um, with regard.
We'll go back to, uh, page two and three, I guess. Slides on page two and three.
What?
Uh, page three.
I don't have page numbers, sorry.
That one right there, page three. Thank you. Uh, where smoking is prohibited in, this is current, retail service establishments. So, does that include convenience stores that sell produce and cokes and stuff?
It's, yes, it has a retail service establishment, it's any establishment that sells goods or services to the general public, so convenience will fall into that.
So, restaurants that sell to go food, why are they separated up?
Restaurants.
They're selling goods and, restaurants are selling goods and services to the general public.
Right, but there's a different, there's a separate definition that addresses food product establishments, so they would fall under the more specific definition.
So, basically, they're, for whatever reason, they've been carved out like the bowling facility.
Correct, correct.
So, how would a, how would a convenience store, if a convenience store cooks hamburgers on premises, can they call themselves a restaurant if they have the smoking? We have those in town.
I think the answer is no, because we have a lot of stores, grocery stores, for example, the best example is that certain prepared food, and they're considered retail, retail service establishments.
Well, you can, that's how.
Okay.
Less than 50 seating people, right?
Oh, this is true.
Do what, ma'am?
Less than 50 seats, seating people, they can't have smoking anywhere.
Well, no, they're exempted. So, they can.
We got restaurants that does a basic food.
Is it, take the large part because of what is the, uh, major purpose of their businesses? Is that how you view? I mean, they took hamburger, but that's not the, for none of them, they're good businesses.
Right, I think it's like Eric said, it was just that when they did this, they decided to send restaurants, period.
Well, they just started carb amounts specifically.
Right, that's why we need to carve that separate.
And in fairness, at the time, uh, this is about eighty-six or eighty-seven, the city of Dallas was one of the first in at least the North Texas area to attempt this, so this ordinance, right or wrong, was really not developed by so much city staff, but piggyback to what Dallas had done. Uh, some things that are a little different that don't listen I talk, but the fifty, less than 50 seating for like a donut shop or less than 500 square feet, you can, and when the citizens, when we first implemented, they asked you why that and why not, why not the other, we really didn't have an answer, other than that's what Dallas had come up with, that it worked, and that, at that, at the time, right or wrong, is what had happened.
Thank you.
So, with regard to the actual ordinance, and we'll address the policy next, um, we have several options, and, you know, obviously, y'all come up with more options, I was just brainstorming here. We can just keep the smoking ordinance as it is. We can, um, do like Dallas Flyer Mount and Plano prohibit smoking across the board, uh, except for the common exceptions like tobacco shops.
Doesn't Highland Village also fall under bullet two?
They weren't a survey city, so. We can prohibit, prohibit smoking in certain establishments, like the retail service establishments, which we already do, but we can also include restaurants, and allow smoking in other establishments like bars and bingo facilities and billiard facilities. Fort Worth and Richardson has done that, excuse me?
Fort Worth.
We can allow smoking in most establishments, but only in designated areas, meeting certain requirements, like separate ventilation, which is what Carrollton, Capella, and Irving do. And I, if we do specific, if we do prohibit smoking in certain places, I would suggest that we also look at prohibit smoking within a certain distance from the door, so that you don't have a bunch of smokers all clustered inside of a non-smoking area, and many of the, the cities do that.
I'd add a little bit of language to that, and I'll go ahead and say, any door that's used by the public, um, because, you know, the back door to the restaurant, it's a different thing.
Well, if you decide to prohibit smoking across the board, it would include workplaces and restaurants.
No, but I'm talking about the distance, the distance, what you're out borders, the distance from the door. I'm saying door that's accessible to the public, the public uses to enter and exit the facility, not the staff. If the staff wants to go outside and smoke, I don't want to send them across the parking lot.
Then we can certainly write them.
They're at the back door. You're not getting back there.
I still want, but this, that's what I just said. One thing I know, the talent business, you can talk with the staff and stuff, they were looking to do in this course, in Flyer Mount, they, they put restrictions on it. Flyer Mount did put restrictions from the door, so we need to, you're forcing it, but put it in their ordinance. Flyer Mount chose, they were going to pretty much copy, I mean, how, it was like, was going to copy it, and then they did go to their restaurants and stuff, and restaurants asked them to pretty much, and I didn't exactly, they allowed them to do it on patios, it means if you have a patio area, you just want, they didn't call that thing by the door, because that gave their people, their patrons that were there, an ability to go outside and still be on their, but that was still posted, so, I'm very anxious to help with this, is the other.
We still think you want that buffer from a certain distance from.
I was just saying, an avenue that they use.
Before we went to lunch today, you'd be walking through it.
Yeah.
It was like patio is both differences.
Where did we go today?
Right at the first.
There was no forum.
No, no, I wasn't.
With regards to.
That's why we didn't invite you.
I wouldn't have gone there.
With regards to the smoking policy, again, we could keep it as is, we can prohibit smoking completely, Capella, Flyer Mount, and Kenny and Richardson, they don't have, in parks, I'm specifically talking about parks right now. Prohibit smoking in certain areas of the park, or prohibit smoking only in designated areas. So, in Grapevine, you can smoke in a park as long as it's not posted as non-smoking. And we could also regulate smoking in parks by ordinance, we can include it in an ordinance instead of leaving it as a policy.
A penalty if we do that, as opposed to just.
So, right now, Louisville's in the third quarter. Certain areas of the park?
Yes, correct.
A certain park.
And, and a way of certain parks.
By policy.
If we keep it as is, I would suggest we amend the policy to include railroad parks.
Can we just make it something, so we change the policy every time we change the name or add a park, or something else?
Sure, sure.
It might be, we looked at that one time, I think, where if there were, if any parks, you know, there were, uh, bleachers or something, you couldn't smoke, so they'd be.
Yeah, bleachers or covered shade structures or.
Wait, what they, what they do?
We haven't addressed playgrounds. We have not. We have not, you might want to consider that.
Oh, let us go.
I just want to add two cents in is, I'm okay with prohibiting smoking all city facilities and parks, and make that part of ordinances, but I have a problem with forcing that policy on private businesses. That's where I'm at on that. I don't like smoking myself, I don't go to places that I can smell it, and I just, that's why I just don't do that, I think that's in our freedoms, but because it is a legal drug, to me, smoking is a drug, because it is legal, um, that is something that should be up to the business owners if they want that.
Um, one question about the smoking, you had mentioned that some restaurants need to have a separate smoking and non-smoking area.
Are there our ordinance?
Yes, is there? Is that supposed to be where you can't smell it in the other side?
No, there's no requirement for separate ventilation, it's just required for separate areas.
That's why I don't go to some of those restaurants, because I can smell it when they're non-smoking.
Ladies, what's, what is the current policy for those little restaurants?
That you have to provide separate indoor or enclosed dining areas for smokers and non-smokers, so they just have to be separate areas, and that certain non-dining areas have to be non-smoking, like the cashier area or where you place your order, but it doesn't include the rest of the restaurants.
But there's nothing in that that says, I'm non-smoking seating in, you're smoking seating.
No, as long as you're in a section, a separate, like a.
There's a section.
So, these two seats would be, in this table, I guess these two seats could be non-smoking and those three seats would be smoking.
Yeah, because there's a designation of the table being a separate, but, I mean.
One moves to another.
I do, but.
Basically, you could still smell it.
No, I, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, my point being a section could be, I'm sitting right next to a smoker, because there's a piece of wood furring on the floor.
Sometimes they'll have like a, like a sliding divider.
No, not by door.
No, it's just going to be separate.
Or a strip of tape on the floor.
Sometimes you see like a sliding divider.
Oh, I see, okay, I, I thought you meant a separate door, and, you know, separating the rooms.
Oh, I remember I did, Norma's in Kirkeby before it got shut down, they had a sign that hung from the ceiling.
Many restaurants have addressed this, our, our sanitarians and our, our uniformed fire inspectors have been enforcing this handling for, since really eighty-seven or eighty-eight, but in the restaurant section, if you're over 50, you can see what the ordinance says, you have, that restaurant has to provide two areas for smoking and non-smoking, and they have to have a sign accordingly. The area has to be a minimum, and this is, again, not much, but a minimum of four foot of separation between those two areas. A lot of restaurants have taken upon themselves to either prohibit it altogether, which they can, or they've done a better job of separating that through the years by ventilation, the chemical ventilation systems that are real expensive, or by glass, or by doors, you'll see some, they'll have lattice works, and some restaurants have not done very well. They literally are four feet apart, and, you know, it kind of just roams around, so, uh, and their competition in the metroplex, they're aware of it, your chain restaurants, a lot of them have already started doing ventilation systems, or some, uh, have even prohibited that, and they have that right, they sign it at the front door, but that's on their own access, prohibit it altogether.
The ordinance says it has to be ventilated, but only where it's, it doesn't mean separate, like some of, like Carrollton has a specific ventilation system that has to be put in, and ours, ventilated could be openly known, and it's only where it's.
Point one up there, it can be read that you have to provide a smoking section.
No, in the, in the ordinance, it specifically says that any owner that wants to have their establishment. But there's a separate, there's a separate section.
That's another issue.
At the beginning of the ordinance, it says any owner that wants to make their establishment non-smoking has a right to, so.
So, if you're going to have a non-smoking section.
You have to have.
You have to have a non-smoking section.
No, no.
I know what the intent is.
Look, what you said is there's a first, in the ordinance, in the ordinance, it states that you have the right to make your entire establishment non-smoking. Then as it goes through here, this is, if you're going to do both, you have to.
And that, that bullet point is truncated, the actual ordinance says, which has, it provides that you have to have a non-smoking if you have smoking.
Does it bring it in?
It doesn't provide that you have to have a smoking, just if you have smoking, you have to have non-smoking.
The way it's written says you have to have smoking.
There's another part of the ordinance.
I can say there's another part of the ordinance, and I know what the intent is, and I think the owner should take the responsibility upon themselves to say, we don't want smoking enough, and that's the way we should do it. Uh, and if you go to a place that you don't like, don't go there. If you don't like the way they cook their food, don't go there. If you don't like the fact that they allow smoking, don't go there. Tell the management, you're losing my business.
You want that to read that?
That's another issue.
Because if they had a lot of career choices, they'd be around, but they don't.
There's restaurants everywhere.
Yeah, restaurants everywhere that don't allow smoking.
They could go down the street, but, you know, if we're going to stop all this, I can tell you the next thing, and it's, it's already coming down the road, is sugar, it's fats, it's everything else that's coming down here, that they won't be able to sell it, or it's going to be taxed.
Their consumption of that doesn't impact me.
No.
It might in a healthcare ways, but, but if, if I can get secondhand carbohydrates, okay, maybe.
Okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on, I can do, very quick, because I got to help the speed courtesy, so if anybody has any questions with the staff, before we get into this, do what.
Where are we going after this with private businesses that allow public access?
Private businesses, what, I'm sorry?
Like a garage or an office building.
Office building, right.
Where, when are we going to do that, too? Because what about the workers there? If we're concerned, let's do it, let's do everybody.
That would be my choice.
I have no doubt that it would be, but if we're going to do it, why aren't we picking on restaurants?
None.
That's what we're talking about.
We're talking about smoking ordinance, it just happened that everybody's talking about restaurants.
That's what we're talking about today, doing a proposal on a restaurant.
No, restaurants could be.
So, this whole subject is about general smoking?
General, generally, what, what would you want to deal with if you wanted to deal with it?
So, today, we could vote on banning smoking in the city.
Well, I'm, no, I'm not going to have you vote on anything today. What I think today, what the law is, we were going to have a discussion as to make sure, first, make sure that everybody understood the current ordinance, ordinance as it is, which you just had a question, so make sure everybody does understand the current ordinance as it is, and then have some discussion on it about, did we want to do anything or not? I mean, if we did want to do anything, what would we want to do? And that's kind of what is, so, no, I'm not here to vote on anything today.
Okay.
On that topic, Mayor, to the city manager and to his question, um, there are several ways this would come up to vote, either we bring it up and vote for it, or citizens get together and do a petition to get enough citizens so that it either comes to us to vote on it, or we vote for it to go on the ballot. Is that correct?
You should have been refereeing.
Referring, I'm sorry, that's the word, refereeing. What is the amount of signatures that they need to have passed and verified? What's the percentage of that, of the voters, it's like five percent of the voting?
It's five percent.
And of over a year or just the last election?
Registered voters.
The last municipal election.
Last municipal election had nine hundred people. So, they would need ninety, or five percent is forty-five signatures.
I can't, I can't give you an exact.
But I'm thinking that's about five percent of nine hundred.
Julie, it's registered voters, not voters who voted.
It's registered voters.
Oh, registered voters.
I'm going to guess it's probably going to be like the local office, like if it was, it'd be somewhere between four to five thousand.
Four to five thousand, so if they did that, if the group, if, if the group that wants to ban smoking did that, we would either have to pass it or send it off to, to be voted on. I'm okay with going to, like, you can vote.
I got a clarification then, if they do the petition wise thing, is the petition for, requires us as council make decision, or is the petition so loud that people don't hear?
You're saying if they're trying to do a referendum?
Yeah.
Mayor, I have sort of the charter, I can't remember off the top of my head how it's written, but if, let's say it was to go straight to be voted on, if you pass the ordinance and you voted on it, it would be ready to be voted on.
Right, right, but their referendum, their petition would be, I probably look at that, the referendum.
I think James is pulling up the charter for me, so I can check that.
Would be to put it to a vote to the citizens not to force the council. We could do it, but not decide that the council has to pass it.
Right, the way I read it is that we either pass it, if we didn't want to pass it, it would automatically go, because of the petition, it would automatically go to vote.
You know, this, I think, to your point, there's, there's three, make sure it's clear, that's not the only option. The other option is one, the council, and what legal is totally, the council itself can choose to act on this one way or the other, it's set, without calling any election, the council itself can choose which cities, Flyer Mount, how they just.
Choose to do what the, what the commission.
Choose to do what the, what the initiative or petition says that you should do.
If they got that.
How about without a petition? Without a petition, then the council could ask, a member of the council could ask to be put on an agenda. A smoking ordinance be put on the agenda. If we could pass any form of a smoking ordinance, if we wanted to, without a referendum or without a vote of general consent.
Hold on. Upon presentation.
What's one more?
Thank you.
Now this is if you have a petition.
Yeah, I'm pending. I'm going all the way through the petition and all the requirements and five percent of which are. Upon presentation to it, the council, of the petition and draft of the proposed ordinance or resolution, so assuming there's a company in draft of the ordinance or resolution, it shall become the duty of the city council within ten days after receipt thereof to pass and adopt such ordinance or resolution without alteration as to meaning or effect in the opinion of the persons filing the petition, or to call a special election to be held at the next available election date in accordance with the election code.
But that election would be for that same ordinance. So again, you don't get to refine it as council.
Well, unless the party presenting the petition would go to a.
But if they got their signatures.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
They can negotiate that.
Hold on a minute. Basically, we've got one option where, like I said, first, no petition, I'm not for just council. A council member asked for it to be put on the agenda. At that time, we could have discussions, the council does have the right, I remember pretending to forget all this. The council does have a right to pass any kind of a smoking ordinance that they like, as is or whatever it is. Or the council also could pass a resolution or a, was it, I don't know, pass a deal, to put it on the ballot for the general public to vote. We could put it on the ballot for an election for the general public to vote.
We would have to call the board.
Yes, the council itself, which are all the board for the.
And the vote would be binding.
Right, and the vote would, vote would be binding. And then the third option, or the third deal would be, if somebody does a petition for us as well as established there, then we would have to either pass ourselves or call a motion. But the other two options are also there without a petition.
I think, I think that once the petition is supplied to the council, in my opinion, and Liz can chime in here, the only way you can negotiate is if the petition somehow withdraws. I'm not sure there's a mechanism for doing that.
Because you sign, you sign.
If it's the council, let's do the council.
The reason you signed that petition is that.
Doing one of two things, do pass it or call an election.
Yeah, I didn't sign that petition because I wanted a watered down version. I signed that petition because I wanted that version.
Okay. So the other question is just to add a little, we have to move that question, we have some restrictions. All right, first got Steve here, question.
Steve Hill, line six four Camden Drive, Lewis Hill. Just a little bit of background, I don't smoke. I'm allergic to smoke, my eyes get all red if I'm near it, get all stepped up. Personal family history, my grandmother smoked all her life, which caused my grandfather to die of lung cancer. All that being said, I'm completely against increasing our smoking ordinance beyond what we currently have. I think just going through it and refamiliarizing myself with what we have, I think it's very reasonable. I don't think we need to increase it. As lots of cities have introduced smoking ordinances over the years, and one of the things I've always heard them say is, well, don't worry if you, if we get rid of smoking in your restaurants here in Dallas, well, then you can go to Capel or you can go to the next city over. And that range has expanded and expanded now to where there's not many cities left, where people are gonna be able to, to go and smoke. There's a restaurant by my house, a type of place that I like to go to, or I kind of like the food. But I don't go there because they allow smoking. I think it's probably less than fifty seats because it's just saturated in smoke. When I open the door, I can't make it from the door to the counter. So I exercise my vote with my feet or my wallet, and I don't go there. Even though I like the place, I like the food, I don't visit that place anymore because I can't physically go in there, can't stand the smoke. So I would suggest that anybody else could exercise that same opportunity. They can leave the establishment if they don't like to smoke, they don't have to visit there. That's one of the points that I, I like. The other point is that obviously, as a council, you have every right to implement a smoking ban, no question. But you would never consider a smoking requirement. You'd never say to a restaurant, you must be smoking only. And so to me, going to a restaurant and saying you must be smoke-free only is just as ridiculous. Yesterday, we had some great presentations about how restaurants do all of this work to figure out where they want to be, what kind of demographic, and which corner of the intersection they want to be on. And they spend thousands, if not millions of dollars on this research of who their customer is. So they know already what those, what those customers are and what those needs are. So if they have determined that they need to have a smoking section to fulfill their customers' needs, then we, as a council or as a city, I don't think we should be overriding that judge. So I would think, I would again just say, let's allow, the business owners, my final point is, as business owners that own these restaurants, they should have the final say ultimately if they want to allow smoking or not. I'd be entirely in favor if you wanted to say, oh, you have to have ventilation or separated areas, I'm good with that. But I just really don't think that it's right to tell these businesses or their customers that they can't operate in the way that they would like to. Thank you.
Who is, and I'm sure you want to speak, but we have Adam.
Phil. It's Phil.
Phil, thank you, sorry, sorry. Did you want to have, did you want to speak, do you have anything to say, or are you just here?
Yeah, yeah, just a couple of comments. My name is Adam Philo, and I'm the tobacco prevention specialist for the council on alcohol and drug abuse. And we do a lot of prevention work in surrounding communities. We discuss how public health in relation to substance abuse, tobacco, alcohol, other drugs. Some of the comments I'd like to make, when it comes to issues related to smoke ordinances, wholly comprehensive, where smoke-free in public places, private work sites, municipal work sites, restaurants, bars, in restaurants and bars outside. By eliminating smoking in these public areas, there are certain benefits as far as, you think of employee health, especially with this economy, it may not be that simple for certain employees to go and find work somewhere else where it may be a smoke-free establishment. And also, another key area that we'd like to talk about is also as far as youth exposure. One of the best prevention strategies that a city can do is by implementing stronger smoking ordinance. By decreasing the availability and exposure to tobacco and smoking. Cities have seen drops in youth substance rates as far as tobacco is concerned. Especially in the city of Dallas, before and after they implemented their ordinance, there was a drop by half of the percentage of students who were currently using tobacco. It dropped by half. And so there's plenty of benefits out there. And if anyone needs any additional information, I'd be happy to provide it. You should have some in your city packets as well.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, any other?
Council, I guess one thing I always have to point out on this, about this juncture, is that restaurants tend to be the topic that winds up getting discussed. Immediately kind of grab and take it to restaurants. But in fact, we already prohibit smoking in hundreds and hundreds of businesses within the city of this today. And have for many, many years.
We tell all sorts of people how to run the business.
It's not like this is something that, it would be new question.
You know, if I can't have an open cesspool, it's illegal. And we've made laws to make those illegal, but why? I'm making other people smell something they don't want to smell, it's unhealthy. I put a fence around it, but I can't have one. Because it's unhealthy and because it makes other people smell something they don't want to smell. Tell me the difference.
Part of our mission is public health. That's part of our mission here, is to make sure that we have a good public health. And I don't believe we'd be having this discussion if marijuana were legal. I think non-smoking would be the law of the land in about forty-eight minutes if marijuana smoke started floating around in restaurants and offices or something like that. So don't, don't give me this. So you flip it around, it's real simple. And if, now if it were just located, if I didn't have to deal with it, that'd be one thing. But people do, it's, it's like being in a swimming pool, that's the old analogy. There's not, there's not an OP zone there, you can't, you don't get to segment. So I think we need to move forward with it, whether it's comprehensive, that matches up with our neighbors, or we look at some other option, or if we want to put it out there as a referendum to the citizens, I'm okay with that too.
I'm gonna come back with one other thing. Y'all all got a copy of this. And on every single item, every single item, the overwhelming response was favoring non-smoking. But I'm gonna zero in on item six, restaurant bar areas. Would you fa, would you favor or oppose an ordinance that would prohibit the smoking? Favor, five hundred and sixty-three people strongly favor. Strongly opposed, twenty-nine.
Who did this survey and what was the group that they did?
Survey Monkey did it up Harleton, Lewis Hill.
Yeah, no, really.
At Harleton Hall?
That's all I needed. Which means that people, it's not like we're talking about people that pile in on something. It's the same thing to happen on this.
It was a survey collected online from town hall meetings, public events, and seven hundred and twenty-two total surveys completed, over five hundred representing cities of Harleton, Lewis Hill, Grand Prairie.
The people who responded to it.
The people who responded to it could have been justice, one end of the bell pulvis and the other hand.
What meeting were they in?
Town hall meetings, public events.
This data set came from these folks back here, they might be able to speak to that and solve a question.
That's a, really, the question you got, you did the survey, the gentleman spoke, he came in, what do you want to do? Why is there going to be an answer?
Sure, yes, this was a Keith and Peter survey that we used in different communities that we do our prevention work in. Influenced by those cities, and Lewis Hill's one of them. These were surveys that were handed out through Survey Monkey and emailed out. And also, we had copies that we took to prevention events, health fairs, town hall meetings, within each community that citizens could fill out and give us their direct opinion. If it was in favor, if it was opposed, really just to gauge what the community wanted as far as this topic.
Was it a controlled sample, that was my question.
It's not controlled, it was an open arena.
This is always the point, which I have to say, that any kind of survey data that you land needs to be just implicitly controlled.
I agree. I'm still vague on cesspool. You don't want to smell in a cesspool, and I can't have more liquid. And that's because we do create laws that protect people from what other people might do that would, you know, affect their health or their well-being or their comfort. It's nothing new.
Well, I don't think, I mean, we've figured, argued all day long, it's odd. The government right now, I think all of us are some form of, the government does control in many people's lives and businesses. An example that probably everyone in this room would be in favor of is alcohol is a legal substance. However, you are not allowed to drive while you are drinking and intoxicated by alcohol. And I think that's probably the thing, but that's a case of government can be in management thing. And I saw, my thing is, I don't know that that's so much the issue. The issue I think they look at is, do you want to put this into effect? Because we do that, rather you wear your seatbelt, rather you, like you said, do the cesspool, allow standing water. We have ordinances that do not allow standing in the water on your own private property because it infests with mosquitoes and so forth, high grass, same thing. All those things that prevent or go to health safety guidelines. I hate for us to get bogged down into the issue of, well, the government doesn't like you to do this. The thing is, do we want to do this here? And that's what I'm trying to, to go concentrate on.
I'd, I'd like to keep everything the way it is, except extend the no smoking to all city facilities and parks.
Would you be willing to have a referendum? Excuse me? Would you be willing to have a referendum?
We don't need one to pass that ourselves.
No, no, I'm talking about more restrictive.
If it got more restrictive than that, I'd be voting no. And if it came from the citizens to vote on it, you know, as in a referendum, either be approved or goes to a citywide vote, then I'm okay with that. Frankly, you know, I think if it got to the citizens, we'd probably, well, I don't know if it passed. I hear a lot, I hear a lot of most side position. I mean, it's not, to me, it's not ninety-ten, it's fifty-fifty pretty much. So it'd be a tight voting, but I don't know what the citizens would do.
Mayor, I think that the smoking ordinance needs to be addressed. I, I don't think that I have enough information right here in front of me to take any action on it.
Well, I agree, I do not want us to call an election today or pass anything today.
Okay, great. Well, I, I think we need to look into this smoking ordinance, but.
Right.
I support, I support looking into it.
And that's what I'd really agree, I certainly would recommend that we not do any kind of vote on an ordinance or anything today, or even passing a referendum to call a vote on a pay ordinance today. One, first of all, is because we've got to have some legal documented policy that we would be considering first if we haven't, we haven't developed that.
Legal policy, or you're saying you'd want to see a draft ordinance?
If we decide to do that, I would think before we would vote on passing anything, we would want to see something in draft.
I need some direction as to how tight you want it.
That's what I'm saying.
What I just said is I would want it, so would you let me know?
Right, and that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, that's why I sure don't want to do anything today because we would need to give staff direction as to something we wanted to possibly look at. Give staff some direction, get us any more information than anybody likes to say, either side of the issues, which you can kind of pull in form, including, or including, as you said, if there's any other studies or anything. Because studies can, and I'm certain, I say your studies excuse me anyway, sir, I'm suggesting. But studies can be, I mean, you remember when, where he kind of brought up, when the substitute sugar people came out with a study, he, that was funded by them, the sugar was bad for you. And then the sugar company came around and found out that the substitutes were bad for you. So it's like, they could be stupid like, boy.
Mayor, you know, just, I mean, one of the reasons that I think the current ordinance needs to be looked at is the way it's written here under the smoking is prohibited on page three. Except in the lobby or arenas not open to the public. And I don't think we commit that duty in the lobby. Of a.
Not at the city.
Not at the city, but I'm talking about even in the restaurant. Is that?
This applies only to theaters, auditoriums, and places, enclosed facilities open to the public for the primary purpose of a motion picture, stage, performance, it should be a sort of theater.
So then, I didn't smoke right out there in the hallway.
No, this is a city facility.
This place is got a special.
This is specially carved out.
Or the theater down the street.
No.